To have a seat, let's get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trenton Magid, David Rosacher, Jeffrey Moore, Michael Pate, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Member of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslow, Planning Director, Sherry Rockwell, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Eric England, Planning Manager, no longer Acting Planning Manager, Mike Carter, Planning Board Administrator, Alan Thielen from the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower, our Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. The Board met this morning, reviewed all the cases, and visually inspected sites. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. I think Jeff was handing some out, but they're right down here if you need an agenda. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us, in the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and if you would take time now to turn your cellphones off, that would be appreciated. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. I think we have, we're adding on the consent agenda case number two as a layover, and I think that's the only change to the consent agenda. And with that, I'll get started with the consent agenda cases. Agenda item number two, case C3-18-82. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. This has been added to consent as a layover. Request approval of the Kiwett Headquarters Campus Redevelopment Plan. Location and area generally bounded by Coming Street on the north, 15th Street on the east, Cass Street on the south, and 17th Street on the west. Does anyone wish to have this case removed from consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number three, case C10-16-287, C12-16-288. Applicant is Jasper Stone, 192nd and Dodge LLC. It is on consent for layover. Request revised preliminary plat approval of Avenue One, a subdivision inside and outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. And final plat approval of Avenue One, lots 1 through 9, and outlots A through C, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location southeast and southwest of 192nd Street and West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number four, C10-17-129, C12-17-130. Applicant Fountain Two LLC. It is on consent for layover. Request final plat approval of office development at Avenue One, Lot 1, and outlots A and B, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location 240 South 192nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number five, case C10-18-78, C12-18-79. Applicant Scrupa Investment Company. It's on for layover. The request preliminary plat approval of Privata, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-82B cul-de-sac length and Section 53-84D lot frontage, along with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, and MU. Location southwest of 204th Street and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, moving on. Agenda item number seven, case C10-18-80. Applicant, I apologize if I say your name wrong, Alvin O'Carieke. It's on for disposition for approval. Request rezoning from R4-35 to R5. Location 3021 North 72nd Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on to agenda item number 10, case C7-17-110. Applicant Roger Ernst. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in a GO district. Location 555 North 30th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, and finally, agenda item number 11, case C7-18-53. Applicant Elkhorn Public Schools. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in a R4 district with a waiver of Section 55-186 height for a 59-foot tall school. Location northwest of 177th Street and George Miller Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. We'll entertain a motion for those on consent for approval.
I move for approval of agenda items number seven, 10, and 11. I stated on the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, we'll entertain a motion for consent items on for layover.
I move to layover items two, three, four, and five on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, for those items that were on the consent, they are done for the day. No other action needs to be taken. If you wish to stay, you're welcome to, or you're free to leave, and we'll continue on with the regular agenda. Agenda item number one, case C7-88-220. Applicant Omaha Performing Arts Society. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow surface parking in a CBD. Property is located within ACI-1 overlay district. This was laid over from our April 4 meeting. Location 1512 Howard Street and 424 South 15th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Troy Myers, Boulevard, South 15th Street. The applicant, also here with Lamper Nielsen, the engineers for the project, and we're here to answer any questions, but we have no comments to the recommendation or the request in the recommendation.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anyone on the Board have a comment or a question? Eric, may we hear from the city, please?
Sure. Just to keep it brief, this request is for a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow surface parking on the subject site located northwest of 15th and Howard Street intersection. The applicant has continued to work with staff since our last meeting in April, and there are a few items that they're going to continue to work with us on, but the Department is recommending approval subject to the five conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion for approval of the conditional use permit subject to the five conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes. Okay, agenda item number six, case C10-4-169. Applicant La Casa West Corp. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Pacific Springs Vista. Location northwest of 168th and Pacific Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Tony Vicanti, La Casa West Corp., 8216 Grover Street currently. We don't really have any other questions, just like see if anyone else did.
Can you charge for Amazon cheese?
Romano, and you know, in your, in your case, no.
If we can, you might want to rethink that.
I don't know how.
There will be a volume limit per month.
Okay, are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions or comments? Eric?
As soon as possible. So as soon as we get through this, go through the process of City Council then in a month, hopefully, we'll break around immediately.
How big will it build it?
How big do you want it?
It's your building.
It's going to be probably approximately 5,000 square feet roughly.
Captive audience, it's good.
Yeah, so hopefully it'll be a nice addition to West Omaha, and you know, let's see. Continue to be a family-owned business and carry that legacy on for another generation.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. For this major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement, originally in 2005, the original mixed-use agreement and final plat was approved by City Council, and there was a condition placed on it at that time by City Council that this lot could not be used for a restaurant or a fast-food restaurant. This major amendment would remove that condition from this lot to allow a restaurant on the site. And Department is recommending approval of the requested major amendment.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the request for a major amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, guys.
All right, agenda item number eight, case C11-18-81. Applicant Ruben Gomez. Request approval of a plan unit redevelopment overlay district. Location 2306 South 39th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Ruben Gomez, 1505 West Broadway, Suite Number 2, Council Bluff, Iowa 51501. I'm just here to ask, to answer any questions you might have.
Are you the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay. Your address, the listed, is in Council Bluffs?
That is my office.
At your office?
Yeah.
Okay. You presently live in the house that's on this property?
Uh, no, currently, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but you plan on building a home, and you are going to live in that home?
Correct.
And rent that house out?
Uh, probably, yeah.
Is that to a family member, or to?
Most likely, yes.
Most likely?
Well, my parents, my move in the house.
Okay, all right. Is anyone living in the existing home?
Uh, currently is rented, yes.
It is rented?
Mm-hmm.
You have tenants in there?
Uh, it's being vacated today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is your timeline before making repairs to the existing home there?
Probably once we start construction on the new house, there is quite a bit of trees that we have to clear, and that's where we are asking the tenant to move out as well.
Okay, and do you know what you plan to do to the existing home?
Just clean it up a little bit outside. It needs a new roof, siding to match, to matches the new house, and new windows.
Ruben, have you heard from any of the neighbors about your project?
No, I actually used to live about a block away, and I know most of the neighbors. I haven't heard from any of them.
Okay. Don't know how the Board will vote on this yet, but if this is a planned unit redevelopment for the new home that's going to go in, if we tied the existing home to that same permit, is that a problem for you to ensure that the existing home gets remodeled in a timely fashion along with the house, the home, new home, being built?
Um, no, it's not an issue. I will consider, I just want to keep the door open in case that I can do it before. If I can do that before.
You would want to remodel the existing home before you would start the new home?
I might. I'm walking the property as soon as this meeting finish and see if the tenant move out, and then just kind of go from there. So it is an option that I start before on the remodeling.
So if we tie the remodeling to the occupancy of the new home, it wouldn't make any difference when you remodeled the existing home? Or so, so if we tied the approval, any approval or motion to ensure that the remodeling gets done either before or right at occupancy of the new home you're being built, that wouldn't be a problem for you?
No, that wouldn't be a problem.
Any additional questions for Ruben? All right. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Sir, come on down. Give your name and address.
My name is Tom Jacobson. I live at 3865 Martha, southeast corner of 39th and Martha, right next door. And I'm here to express the same concerns that you have all brought up, is what's going to happen to that old house? The whole, the new house is beautiful. I like it. It'll fit right in the neighborhood. Everything's great there. What I'm afraid of is nothing will be done with that old house, which is a nice, or is probably beginning pretty close to blighted. And besides that, is there any inspections going to be on this house too? Like for rats, which there are, and like insects, mildew, anything like that, before he remodels it or makes sure that everything is up to code there before we get people in there, and they got to be responsible for cleaning it up. And it has got to be, like he says, new roof, new siding, stuff like this. This place is a disaster. But as far as the other new house, maybe that's fine.
How do you know there's mildew or mold in that?
Don't know. All I know is that there is, the one side of the roof is so bad that it's got to be leaking in. And I've known the lady that rents that place, it's being moved out today, and she says, yeah, it's wet in there, the floors are kind of squeaky and stuff like that, and water sits in it, so I'm just assuming. I, all I brought up was the possibility of somebody going in there and kind of inspecting the place for mold, mildew, termites, anything like that. The neighbor on the south side of him has told me that they've had to move their garden because of the rats, and probably from living underneath the structure and stuff like that. So little things like, I know they're not little things, but we're going to get that cleaned up before we put a nice house there. And just didn't want it to turn into another old rental-type deal that, oh, well, he's going to help me pay for the rest of my new house here.
As long as the home is cleaned up, brought up to code or standards that would, the city would impose, you're all right with a second home on that lot?
Sure.
Okay.
If it's dressed up and no more rats, no more, I don't, there's probably rats under there anyway, but yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, did you wish to say anymore, sir?
No.
Okay. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Anyone on the Board? Ruben, do you want to come back up? Do you agree or disagree with him?
No, I agree. The reason I don't know exactly what's going to happen is because when we did our walkthrough, it was just full of the person belongings, and we couldn't really see anything. But the house needs some help, and we're going to do it.
Because if it needs help and you don't take care of it, you're just going to, you're getting to the point where it's irreversible, and you're going to have to tear it down. So you're better off looking at, and do we have a commitment from you that when you walk through there and this person's moved out today or tomorrow, to repair what needs to repair, to make it habitable?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's my, that's my only idea.
It's on the record.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's your parents that you might move in there?
Yeah.
So, so you really have a higher inspection right there, don't you? Do you like your parents?
I think that's, sir, that's my, my biggest concern is that because the PUR applies to the whole lot, generally, we hold those types of properties to a slightly elevated standard as far as building materials and things like that, and I would want to make sure that those things are addressed on the existing property as well. And so that's my concern is to make sure, what I don't want to have happen is you build a nice house, and we go through the PUR process, and that's all great, and then you do nothing to the existing home, and it continues to deteriorate. So I would be in favor of tying them together because of that, and making sure the PUR is applied to the entire property.
I'm going to walk the property after this meeting is over for the first time since the tenant moved out. And then I, my intention was, is to see what needs to be done and actually get a fresh start on it before we start the house.
Yeah, great.
Any other questions for Ruben or anyone else before we hear from the city? Eric, may we hear from the city's recommendation?
Sure. So the regulations of the PUR overlay district allow two-family residential in the R4 district. That's the primary reason why it's come before you for the, for the PUR request. There is a one small waiver that is incorporated in for impervious coverage. The applicant is proposing 51%, whereas the R4 district allows 50%. So I just wanted to point that one item out. The site plan, the proposed location of the home and the front setback, there is a provision in the zoning code that allows a setback adjustment based on the number of homes already that are existent on the block that are closer setback than what the zoning usually requires. So the applicant is utilizing that tool. I do want to point out that we will need a revised site plan that brings the proposed home further to the south a few feet to match the adjacent home on the west. So that'll be one requirement in our recommendation. Also, the Board embattened treatment on the second floor north elevation should be provided in a similar manner on the east, west, and south elevation. So we would need updated plans for that as well prior to forwarding to City Council if you voted in favor. I did want to point out one, one thing that the applicant mentioned. If the condition of the existing home is in such poor shape that he would need to remove it, the city would probably want to reconvene with the applicant to discuss, you know, the options or the location of that home. Currently, it's in non-conformance with zoning setbacks and items like that. If that home has to come down, you know, we would probably want to look at it to see if we can improve those setbacks. So if, if the condition is that poor, we would, we would request that you, you come speak to us so we can figure out those details. But if he's just doing remodeling, you know, he'd have to comply with any building code, electrical code requirements that our permits and inspections would require for any improvements on that existing house. So the Department is recommending approval of the PUR subject to submittal of an acceptable revised site plan and building elevations prior to forwarding the case to City Council.
Okay. Chris, did you want to make this motion?
Yeah, I, and jump in if, if anyone disagrees with this, but what I would like to do is make a motion for approval of the PUR subject to the submittal of an acceptable revised site plan and building elevations for both the new building and the existing building prior to forwarding the case to City Council, with the condition that if the existing home is removed, the applicant must meet with the city prior to moving forward on the PUR. Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense to me. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, case C8-18-75.
C7-10-68. Applicant Dave Palladino. The request approval of a major amendment to a special use permit to allow convenient storage in a CC district with a waiver of Section 55-366 height for a 125-foot tall flagpole. and approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in a CC district with a waiver of Section 55-366 height for a 125-foot-tall flagpole. The location, 20800 West Dodge Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Dave Palladino, 2702 Douglas, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. And we're, you know, looking to put up the big flagpole. And when we first came up with this idea, we had thought about it before, but really lately, because of, you know, our patriotic nature, thought it'd be a great idea. We were a little surprised that there's a restriction for flagpole heights, so. And then based on the staff's recommendation, this is going to definitely be an uphill battle. So there's, you know, other than the patriotic nature of the idea, we're really convinced that we really need one. You know, we'd like to put one up. We have a lot of locations. When we really reflected on that, we thought the best place was 200 Nathan Dodge because of where it's at and its prominence to the entrance into the city. And so that's why we picked that one out. And the reason that, you know, we want a big flag is just because it's very noticeable. And if you kind of reflect on, you know, what are the big flagpoles and, you know, the American, and we obviously just want to put an American flag up, and we'd like to put a Husker flag on game day because, you know, frost mania, obviously. We're just infected by anybody else. And the, when you reflect on the flagpoles that, you know, really stick out, of course, think of the election company on John Gault Boulevard and I-80 and 100 Days. The other one that I think, and if you're old like I am, the one on 40th and, it's no longer there, the Perkins on 38th Avenue and Dodge. I don't know how they ever got that. They improved in the middle of town, but that was a very impressive flag. And so that's kind of the statement we'd like to make. We don't want to put a little one. If you turn me down, I just won't build one at all. Because the 75-foot, it's really hard to see it with everything going on. We have two billboards, you know, one of them is on our property, one of them is our neighbor property. It'd get lost in, you know, in the basically, the visual noise.
How big is it, would the flag be?
Uh, 20 by 30, guess.
And do you, does it stay up all night?
Uh, we'd like to light it. I mean, we've never talked about.
How do you change that light bulb?
We'd leave it up as much as we could. They say to take it down when it gets really windy.
Is the light bulb would be up on top?
Uh, no, it'd probably be on the ground.
For 125 feet?
I'm assuming. I mean, I don't know what the regulations are for that, but, I mean, that's obviously a negotiation. But we want, we want a, we want a big flag, whether it's lighted or not lighted. I guess it's not that important.
What if we said we'd rather have you do like 200 feet?
Trent, that's what I thought. I literally thought that we could put up any size flagpole we want, and when we're looking online and we're thinking, well, let's start with 200 feet. And then we started looking around, and you can't have a big flagpole, which is kind of surprising, actually. You would think that, you know, we would want to, you know, encourage big flagpoles, but that's the exact opposite.
You'd do, you're going to need a red light for the airplanes.
You know, I, you know, I've been thinking about that. You know, when you fly around on the pilot's little dash, they get a little white, little kind of triangle-looking thing. I don't know if any of you are pilots, but you get a little white, little triangle thing, and it's white, and then as you get, if you get too close to it, it gets big white. And if you get really too close, it gets big red. And if you get really, really close, like make a decision, it takes up the whole screen. Yeah, I guess if a pilot's flying at 125 feet, it probably has a bigger problem than, you know, a flagpole. He's probably going to hit the ground because of something else. I'm not a pilot, but.
So Dave, you said that you would not put up the flagpole if it were any less than 125 feet?
Yeah, and that's kind of my nature.
You don't think 75 feet? I mean, think about 75 feet, that's pretty tall.
It is pretty tall, but we could just do it someplace else. We'll just find another place where it's easier to do either another, I, we haven't even looked at it before, and we have the facility down there. That's in, you know, we'll just try it someplace else than here. We don't have to do it here. They're really, it's really expensive to put in a flagpole this size. We're thinking somewhere around $50,000.
It's not going to be the flagpole that's going to draw the attention. It's going to be the size of the flag that's going to draw the attention.
Yeah, that's true.
A 20 by 30 flag is going to be a pretty good-sized flag.
It's going to be a big flag, yeah. They're very expensive. But yeah, we want to, we just really like this idea. We've thought about it before, but we're pretty serious this time. And we'll try someplace else. There's other places that we have that probably allow that. This is just the first one. And I was talking to somebody earlier. I'm going to try to, instead of, you know, putting up a good fight, which I always put up a good fight when I'm trying to change zoning or like we ran it out of 72nd Maple, I'm going to try to give up easier. So if you don't give me this, that's fine. We'll just go on to something else where it's just a little easier. Because we really like, we just want to see what it looks like, and it's fine if it.
Do you think Creighton fans and UNO fans will be jealous?
I don't know, Creighton. Maybe Iowa State, I don't know. You know, we have properties here. We can go up there, look at that.
Okay, any other questions for Dave?
I know that the planning board recommends denial and stick with the 75. I think that something like this is that it's unique, and I don't think that many of the citizens of Omaha, business owners, would spend that kind of money to do something. There's probably some benefit to say we're at where the big flag is for their business, but I could go either way on the Nebraska flag. But I would, I'd be tempted to support this because it is a high point. There's not a lot around there. I don't think any of the neighbors can be upset because there's a big American flag in the time we're in. And I realize this isn't about being anti-patriotic to deny this, but at the same time, every once in a while, we need a big American flag. And so I would, I'd venture for what he's talking about, to allow it.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Are there any other, I mean, proponents? Are there any opponents? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the board?
I just want to see if we can pull it off.
May we hear from the city, Eric?
Sure. So because there's an existing special use permit and conditional use permit on the site, you know, a request for a waiver of a zoning code section has to come before the planning board and also the city council in this case with a special use permit, in addition to. No, I'll stop there. So the base zoning district, the community commercial, has a height limitation of 60 feet. There is a provision in the zoning code that allows up to an additional 25% for certain items, included with that is a flagpole. Therefore, you know, patriotism aside, staff looking at a zoning perspective, we believe that 75 feet is, you know, is what it should be limited to, and that is why we are recommending denial.
Okay. I move to, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the waiver for a conditional use permit to allow 125-foot sign.
Flag?
No signs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Yes. Megan?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
No Iowa State flags.
So he gets to do the Nebraska flag and this, that's it?
Okay.
Yep, that was your request, correct, Dave? Okay.
Yeah. You ask it, you have to change it.
Okay.
Congratulations.
That ends our agenda.
But you're done, you've got.
That ends the agenda. We have minutes from the April 4 meeting. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Yes.
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 S.
Yes.
Epstein.
Yes. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Well done, Mr. Chair.